Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I in your name.
I Kyle Langstrom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I'll faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Council.
Of the Office of City Council.
In the city of Boone, Iowa.
The city of Boone, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Great much.
Now, we're gonna get.
Next year. And then you can have your family come over.
I'm gonna have to bring it in.
For you guys.
Back for two. Bring your family out. So Kyle will fill it hill. Uh, his next term will be in November, correct? So we won the special election and did very well. So I want to congratulate Kyle and welcome to City Council.
Okay, next up, update of Boone County Emergency Management Department, Chris Hayes.
Stand up here.
Sure.
Yeah. I was told to be brief. I got thirty seconds, otherwise I'm getting kicked out, so. My name's Chris Hayes. I'm the Boone County Emergency Manager. For those of you that haven't had the opportunity to be yet. I'm just coming to give you kind of an update on what we're working on. So uh, one of the major things we're working on right now is the outdoor warning sirens. What we're doing with those is we're upgrading them to the new ISIC system that the radio system is currently on from the old BHS system. We're in the process of getting bids on that right now. Uh, emergency management is gonna try to put the bill for that, so the cities won't have to worry about that. We're doing that clear across the county. Uh, we're also looking at building a command trailer for countywide use. We had the RV for a while and that didn't really work out so well. So we're hoping with the command trailer, we're gonna get it in aluminum, so it'll be lightweight and every agency can pull it with a pickup. Uh, we currently have bids for that. We're just waiting to secure a little more funding and hopefully we will have that in the process by the end of the fall, or by the end of fall. Um, one of the other things we're working on is we're working with the Sheriff's Office to update search and rescue in county, search and rescue. One of the things we want to do with that is take some of their boats and move them out to some of the fire departments in the county, just to kind of improve the faster response time in the event of a water rescue, that kind of situation. Uh, I also work on some training, cooperative training throughout the county with search and rescue, such as water rescue and ice water, or ice rescue. And then recently, we just completed the school safety grants assessments, so hopefully the schools will, should be getting that access to that fifty thousand dollars here shortly. I haven't heard anything on it yet, but oh, it's all in the state's hands now, so. We're also looking to snowball off of that and we're gonna be bringing in some active shooter training into the county to try to incorporate both first responders and the school administrations. Um, we're also working on some kind of some countywide planning for and uh, critical incidents like active shooters. And then, right now, just the rest of stuff we're working on, rag ride doesn't really affect the city of Boone, lucky for you guys this year. Um, and then we're just doing our usual updates on our countywide plans, so.
Awesome.
That's the, that's the highlight, hopefully kept it under a minute.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, tell me a little bit more about the active shooter. I wondered if we had any training with that in our school systems.
So, right now, I'm still fairly new. We, we haven't had anything since I've come on.
Okay.
Uh, but I know that, for instance.
Yeah, um, we do alert training with the school every, before the start of every school year, all the staff at the school. Uh, we have an alert instructor as well at the school as well, so we assist them with that training every year. Um, they don't do, the school district at this time does not do any regular training with the students. Um, all of the staff has up-to-date alert training.
Okay, the staff does. Do they do any practice, like how to evacuate the building or anything like that? Do you know, is that part of it?
They, to my knowledge, they do not do any of that training internally.
And that's one of the things we want to work with the schools on more is to get that integrated with our responders, so that way we understand how each other works during and sit back that. And we are bringing in several FEMA and Homeland Security classes, one of which uh, hasn't been done in the state of Iowa yet, so Boone will be the first county to do that. So.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, Chris.
Good job all the time.
Okay, next up, uh, Boone County Chamber, Jennifer.
I haven't been in my office for twenty minutes.
Well, I have a map for the, um, for the street. And so, um, that's something I can certainly send you guys in terms of what we're looking at for, for proper billing. Um, let me start with, so, getting everything for having me. Um, I have taken on the role of Executive Director of the Chamber. And so Mike left us mid-March and so, uh, since I've been, I've taken on this role, certainly still learning a lot. And so, um, let me know certainly if I'm missing anything. Um, we're, we were working on a lot too. So one of the things that we wanted to do was uh, really focus in on our membership and really, um, as, as I've kind of mentioned to a few people, good chambers live and die by their membership. And so with, we went through the renewal process, um, in December, we're still kind of working through that. And with the, uh, we've added sixteen new members since, since December alone. And so we've got another ten or so that are on, um, in the, in the pipeline so far. Um, one of the other things, of course, is proper billing. And so with that, I wanted to share a little bit of what we're doing with proper billing. I've had a lot of conversations about some of the changes, but um, we're really working on focusing those activities, planning forward for events and such. Um, but many of them were really focusing on bringing to Story Street. So, um, in the past, I know, for example, we have the concert behind the Chamber building, um, and using a lot of, of that space up off of Ninth. Um, so currently, we're going to be actually putting the stage, if we're good, um, putting the stage up on Ninth and, uh, and Story, so in the intersection, having all the seating behind it. Um, Eighth Street, the, the green space to be used quite extensively with entertainment, both on Friday and during Saturday, food trucks in that area. A lot of activities and events on the street. Um, and then as you go down Seventh and, uh, from Eighth down to Sixth, be utilized quite a bit with the car show, as well as, um, the, of, of course, the, the parade route in itself. Um, a couple of things I'd like to promote, or I guess really kind of announce, is that we have established a water park, uh, with our kids' activities. So, um, we realized that it's August and we realize it's hot. And so one of the things that we wanted to do is be, is, is really kind of capitalize on that frankly, and really kind of, um, give our community something a little different. So, um, we got, we've, um, worked with a rental company and, um, got a number of different inflatables, water, uh, water events and water activities right there. I'm gonna, in fact, thankfully to, to Justin and his team, we're actually gonna put a lot of those water activities, um, in front of the, the fire station. And, um, use that space really as a great opportunity for, for kids and for families to, to enjoy that part. Um, the, um, the other thing I wanted to, to talk about is my goal ultimately, when I'm walking into this, um, even from back in November, my experience with the festival, is the Boone River Valley Festival, um, is to make proper Billy family-friendly. Um, and every square foot of it be walkable and always meaning that, that families would really want and be attracted to. And so my goal in that is to, um, I guess one, one area that has been a place of contention is the, um, is the beer tent. And so as a mom of four kids, for example, one thing that I didn't go into with, with our kids, it really wasn't an attractive space for, for young children. And so, um, using the model of Iowa State Fair and other, uh, and other festivals that have in, even in downtown areas, is to allow open beverage, um, containers, um, throughout the festival and not have that contained, you know, beer tent look. Um, and so, um, this with, again, with the help of John and, and, and lots of, in fact, four levels of security around, uh, around alcohol consumption. Um, but this would allow adults with their children or so to be able to enjoy a, a beverage, but then be able to walk and, and enjoy the car show or, um, the spike grabbing contest or the bike tournament. Um, and, um, and so for, for our sake, that would look like, um, open beverage, uh, availability from Sixth Street up to Ninth Street. So Sixth Street, the reason why that's important, and that's where the car show would start, and up to Ninth, of course, is where the concert is that Saturday night. So this would allow folks to be able to really enjoy the entire festival and not be kind of beholden to a space to consume. If that makes sense. Um, so those are some of the big notable changes and I'll take, anybody have any questions, kind of where I'm at so far with?
How do you plan on controlling that?
How, how do I control, control it? So with, um, with those four levels of security, so first of all, at points of entry, I've got, um, I've got volunteers at every point of entry. So that would look like barricades on Eighth, I'm sorry, on Sixth, Seventh, Eighth and Ninth, essentially, um, with either security around the Ninth, Ninth area because of the stage and such, but then, um, regular volunteers on Eight, Seventh and Sixth.
Um, excuse me, is this the map?
Yes, thank you. Um, and so that, what that looks like then is a, um, a, as I said, volunteer to points of entry, checking IDs and respans, great, respanding those who are twenty-one and over. Even if they don't, they tell me they don't want to drink, but certainly we don't, people consume, but we do want to have that resband on them, um, so that we can identify. Then, um, they have to purchase a ticket, but again, like your, um, like most festivals, you have to purchase tickets in order to purchase alcohol. And so at that point too, there's a, there's volunteers who are checking for respans and IDs. Um, then of course, at where kind of the, the pink kind of cross there in the middle is kind of your, the combination of food trucks and, um, and ticket booths and such. Um, and that's again, you've got levels, uh, you've got people who are checking IDs, making sure people are disbanded, um, before they can, um, can even purchase the tickets. Um, and then, uh, number three is you've got the folks who are at the beer, I, I call it a tent just for our, our sake, but it's the language I know is kind of confusing, but basically where people actually purchase their beer with a tick. Thank you very much. Um, and then, um, and then the fourth level is paid police presence. So, um, again, using the Iowa's, uh, my, the State Fair kind of model, even that we could festival, um, at Art in the Park. We had beer consumption at Art in the Park with police presence. They would walk in and just shovel the area, making sure that nobody was, you know, assuming. The only area that is outside of those, so I, and I apologize to take a step back now that we have the map in front of us. The, the, the rectangle there in the middle, that is my barrier for, um, for beer consumption. The only thing outside of that is that water park area. And it, it really, that was because I didn't want, as a team, we talked about having aluminum cans and things like that, you know, water park area. Busting, um, unsafe. So that area, um, would, would not allow, uh, that there would be signage.
Brain route, yeah.
So I, I apologize. The parade route is the blue, um, so it goes up Story and actually crosses over on Seventh. So, um, as coming from Hancock, going up Story, as it usually has, it will cross over on Seventh instead of Eighth. And the reason is because that allows a lot of the stuff on Eighth Street and the corner of Eighth and Story, um, to remain there. So from Friday night to Saturday, folks would know where, where to go for their food trucks, the entertainment, things like that would then be able to start right away. Um, also this allows everyone to, uh, disembark floats and such in the high school parking lot as they usually have, uh, but just from the other side of the parking lot.
Yes.
One other, I guess, notable change with this year is that the vendors, um, and the craft fair vendors, actually now, I will be over at McHose. So we, uh, the team did bring back Art from the Park for this year, and so that will be on Sunday. Um, I, it is to note that this setup is, um, only applicable on Friday and Saturday. Uh, Sunday then becomes your, uh, community worship service over at the high school, plus Art in the Park and the train swap show, which is at, um, paragraph. Um, and so that this whole setup goes away.
So after the, after the, is there any vendors downtown after the parade?
So there will not be vendors downtown, but we're really pay, what we're really doing here is putting a huge spotlight on our downtown stores. And so we're really, uh, setting the stage for them to shine, um, as well as have lots of activities and lots of things for families and, and, and adults to do downtown. Um, but the, the shopping focus will really be on our downtown shops.
Well, I think that, that's great, but I think that brings a lot of people down there too, the vendors.
I know.
Thousands of people walking around down there after the parade. You know, the parade's over, they kind of, I mean, it's always been kind of tradition, they trend to go downtown, walk around. I, I, I'm not knocking your idea, I'm just wondering, where are they gonna go?
Well, that, that's, and so we have over twenty-four events, um, you know, or I'll, I'll say about twenty events that are happening downtown. And, um, with the, we've got a motorcycle show as well as the, a lot of the contests, a lot of the, um, we've actually got entertainment that will be starting around noon, right after the, um, right after the parade. So that'll be, a- as well as like the kids' activities, well, the, the focus on that water park will be on Saturday. Um, and so right after the parade, we'll have a lot of, from a lot of stuff that'll start at eleven, if not noon, to drive that traffic downtown.
I'm just asking.
No, 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 it's true, because and, and to be honest with you, I, I, you know, my conversation is even with the store owners themselves, like, I wanted to set a stage for you, but I want you to show up on that stage. And so, um, I really, I, I want to put a big spotlight on that, on our downtown and really drive a lot of happy.
My own personal adification, where, when and where is the race, the five K?
Um, so the five K route at this point hasn't, haven't changed. Um, and so, yeah.
There's been a couple of different places that started at.
Oh, that's a great, that's a great point. Even back when I, yes, so, um, last year. So, um, my understanding is about between Boone Vision and, um, and the bakery is fair.
Saturday morning or?
Yes. Any questions or thoughts, concerns? Okay, I mean, really, this is, this is change. I mean, and yet so, there's more about proper Billy that's staying the same, that's, that's changing. But my goal is that the tweaks are, are, are notable and that they really breathe some new life into the festival. Um, I believe that having such a big band, I mean, we're talking the first multi-platinum selling band that Puffer's seen in at least fifteen years, not longer. And so, we believe that we can get a lot of, not only our folks to come out and really, really support proper Billy, um, we can really be a regional draw. Um, and that's, that's my goal. Any questions, even about, even about the chamber? So I know that I've kind of not really given a whole lot of detail, I don't know. Um, we, we really had, um, really hit the ground running in my position. It's been, uh, as I said, it's a lot to learn, it's a lot to do. Um, but I, you know, in serving two hundred and twenty-five members, um, advocating for them, supporting them, um, really working in this region, um, to, to create partnerships, if not strengthen partnerships, where maybe some of those partnerships needed some, some extra work. Um, but that's my, that's my real goal, is to build on the relationships that I've been able to establish in Boone, um, and let alone in Boone County, um, for the past twelve, if not fourteen years. Um, and, and really turn around and, and use that to, to build our economy up and build our, build our community.
Just one thing for, uh, where she wants the alcohol. Obviously, you don't need to vote on that tonight, but that map would be part, correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, would be part of the alcohol license that they apply for at some point?
Yeah, that has to be, so when, that'll have to be submitted, uploaded to Iowa ABD as part of the documents for the Iowa alcohol.
So keep in mind, as you're planning your, uh, festival, that the approval comes whether you're allowed to do that when the license is submitted and it comes before council. And so I'd encourage council to have any questions about that tonight, that we can ant, get answered or anything, and I know Jim may have a.
Well, I think the security part of it needs to be approved by police and fire both. I think that would be something we seriously need to, to look at, whether it come from a liability standpoint. Uh, and how good that security that they propose really is, so. So I think the license would require these gentlemen to sign on, as well as council.
And then you're familiar with the decor amendment, right? Make sure that doesn't slip through, you, you're aware of that, perfect. Okay.
And, and to your point, I, I've, I've certainly, well, again, these are, these are changes, I realize that these are, are, um, that they're, they're big changes and, and at, at least in terms of process. And so I have, I, I've talked to many of, uh, I've talked to John and Justin and, and Bill. And so, again, if there's hoops I need to jump through, um, you know, let me know, because again, the, the, that's the goal, is to really again, make this whole thing family-friendly, actually decrease the amount of incidences, um, from overconsumption. And so from, you know, my research, that actually is what, what happens, is because folks can actually, you know, be around their families, they can, um, they can enjoy and walk throughout the entire festival, they're not, just not sitting and drinking.
Question, do other, um, cities do this, where they don't confine to a beer tent, they just allow to move around?
And I think that's, that's kind of the neat thing now, is that we have a lot of communities that have, have done this and have done it well. So you can get into downtown Des Moines, where you have like a beer festival, you know, or, you know, beer wine festival, where that is the point, is to move around. Um, and yet though, it's all downtown, you know, it's all, you know, multiple, multiple blocks downtown, let alone farmers markets and, uh, um, and, and festivals, uh, even the Dayton rodeo, you know, has downtown, um, a downtown, uh, concert, um, that, that really kind of, you know, again, minus the kids' activities and things like that, but, you know, mirrors a lot of the, you know, a lot of the aesthetics that we're looking for. Um, and so I it's, it's a change for us, it's a change for Boone, um, but I, it's, it's not, it's remarkable. And with that too, I would certainly want, and I would, um, I, I want certainly that the city of Boone to, um, to see value in the work of Puffer Billy as being the town festival. And so as a spy, as a longtime sponsor of the festival, we thank you and appreciate your, your support. And, um, you know, I would ask that you continue to support the festival, um, financially speaking, if not, um, as a, even as the title sponsor, um, on a regular basis, we could, um, there's parts of it that you'd like to, to align your brand with, we would certainly like to help you with that.
So what are you expecting from the city in, in-kind services?
In, in-kind services, I would, I, I, I guess I'm not aware of, of.
Like picnic tables and that type of stuff that they haul down there every year?
Mm-hmm. Um, right, so I would have, that would be a lot of good questions about what, um, what kind of services. And again, this, this is my first time with Puffer, and so I would have to, I would love to know, you know, what the city, in terms of, you know, I want to be able to kind of put that value in what, what some of those services are that, that I, that I need to make sure gets, gets done, because those are a, a kind of a city responsibility. Um, whereas like, you know, with the festival work, sometimes I add, you know, John Reynolds, or, or, I'm sorry, uh, Russo with, with the landfill going to get stuff, you know, so I, I would love, you know, help me understand what, um, and this one, this certainly, we could have, um, a longer conversation, but I would love to know what it is I need to make sure that I line up beforehand.
Phil and Wayland could probably answer those questions. The only concern I have is security in and out, because your volunteers carry no authority.
Sure, sure, and I understand that. And so the good news is, is that, um, I do have a, so number one, I do have a good, instead of a, a good quantity of volunteers that are gonna be there. I actually have a great partnership moving forward, even from back in twenty-one, when I worked with Habitat for Humanity. So it, they again are gonna be working alongside, um, this festival, um, in, alongside me in now with this festival. And so, um, at the end of the day though, it's the paid police presence, it's better, I mean, I've got, you know, one to two officers each night. So from the point we start serving to the point that we stop serving, um, we want to make sure that we have, um, authorities that we can, we can call on if we need to.
Okay.
I can move down. Yeah, um, I think, let's see, I, 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 I guess, so I don't know what your thoughts are on the sponsorship conversation, if, if you want me to submit something, uh, an official ask?
So in two thousand twenty-two, council approved five thousand dollars for the chamber for the festival in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the chamber never sent an invoice, so that money was not sent. Uh, it is available, uh, to forward to them for if council so chooses for the twenty twenty-two. I don't know if you were planning on making a request for twenty twenty-three, now would be the time to do it. Um, so if council has any questions about that, or, uh, if you want me to forward, I certainly can forward that check, I have it, it's in the budget. Uh, so I can certainly forward that, but as you know, we pay off invoices and we, we never did get an invoice from that. I've received one now and, and I've, uh, got it approved, so I have the check, I can certainly send that for twenty twenty-two. Um, can you tell us, um, where you stood at the end of twenty twenty-two for finances on the festival?
So overall, we were in the blacks. And so, um, with the city's support, we were able to, um, be in the black, although, yeah, in my email to you, um, essentially break even. So we were, um, above, a little bit less, I mean, it was, but I'm sorry, a little bit more than two thousand dollars that we were, we were ahead. Um, and yet though, no, that doesn't, um, that, that doesn't take in consideration staff time. So I think that, um, our goal, and I'll say my goal, is to right-size the, the, the proper Billy weekend and, uh, to be good stewards of the finances. Not, again, not to say that the team wasn't beforehand, um, but, and, and I will say too, one of the big things about last year is we had to make some big purchases last year that will serve us for years to come. But they were expensive in, in twenty-two, so, um, not all of it was just, um, you know, was just money out the window.
So how much did you increase your budget this year, Jennifer, by hiring that band?
So actually, we, we, we did increase on the music side, but we decreased in other ways. So, um, they, the good news is, is that I think, and I'll say this too, for revenue sake, um, while the concert, for example, is, is essentially free, we are selling VIP passes and tickets and things for, for that. Um, so we'll be able to recoup a lot of those costs.
So is the invoice for the five thousand, what, are we sponsoring a certain event or something?
So back in twenty-two, if I'm not mistaken, we, we put this, the city's name on the kids'.
Yeah, if I remember, twenty-two, that was for the carnival. Right? That.
The inflatables.
I'm sorry? Well, right.
Well, it was for the carnival, but that never materialized. Yeah, and to tell the elected official, there is nothing in the minutes that says we're specifically for, uh, just that they gave five thousand dollars in support of Puffer Billy Days.
Yeah.
Well, um, and it was approved.
Okay. But we didn't pay that, so that's still earmarked.
We have that.
For this current.
I can certainly, yes, I can release that check now that I've received an invoice.
And so for this, what are you proposing that we?
I, I mean, I would love to see that the city, um, support it, even at a ten thousand dollar level, which I believe it has been done before. Um, that would make the, the city a title sponsor over the entire festival and really be able to promote, um, promote the city of Boone throughout, from start to finish, if not, with all of the promotion beforehand. Um, and, and certainly what, as well as after. Um, you know, that being said, we certainly have a lot of great events that are at the, at, uh, at five thousand dollar level that will certainly give a lot of awareness.
Well, we got, I mean.
That's fourteen.
I think five again, personally.
Uh, if we did ten, where would we have the other five come from? Is that even possible?
You mean ten on top of the five or?
No, five covers last year in terms of the.
That's done, the five, we're giving them that, so now we're talking about this year.
So we are gonna pay that in tax, okay.
Yeah, we just.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll release her. Yeah, yeah, and I'll release her. Yes.
They're going to get their five thousand that they didn't send us an invoice on.
Yes.
Okay, so they ended up with ten. Yeah.
But if we give them another five.
Okay.
Ten grand.
Um, okay, so. With our last year's support of five thousand. And proposal of five thousand now, where would that come from?
So the five thousand for twenty two came out of this year's economic development budget line item.
Okay.
Um. I would need to check if 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 I have money for that in this budget year. If not, then it would be uh delayed until this until this year, twenty four July first. Uh, but I can look at those and see. I I just can't give you a hundred percent answer because I'll have to look at the line item.
Can we wait until you pin this down before we take action on it? Can we wait until the next meeting? I mean, I want to know that the money is there, you know, we committed.
Sure, council's decision. Just so much going on and needing. Yeah, I can bring that back at the uh. I mean, April seventeenth council meeting.
Yeah, I I would like to.
In the meantime, I'll release the five thousand dollar check.
Yeah, that, yeah. Do we need, uh, that's already been approved, so we don't need to look from that.
Yes, sir.
So I I mean, I want to at least do the five thousand. I just need to know where it's coming from first. That's reasonable.
For it's for festival twenty three, I can tell you, yeah, I'll look at it and I can bring it back at the April seventeenth council meeting.
Sounds good.
If if council is acceptable to that.
Um, another request I would have. Uh, is for for next year and beyond. Be really great to have that in for the hotel motel discussion, honestly, because that's, you know, the same, that's what it's for. It's for promotion and stuff like that.
With all due respect to that. We have gotten burned several times in the past. And with you're new, so yeah, I'm not blaming you at all. You have never been a fan of chamber up until this point. So. What I'm saying is. Accountability for that money.
Sure.
I I asked for that. I've been asking for that for four years and have yet to receive. So that's the only thing I would ask because we take a beating all the time on on the use of taxpayer money. So I want to make sure that we're using taxpayer money the right way. So that that's all I ask. Just accountability, a little transparency coming from the from the chamber, which like I said, we were never. Pray to in the past, so.
And and I will say this, and then again, I'm I'm still rolling this. It's not something that, you know, I I can do very fast. And again, you know, it. But I do believe it it's a necessary change, especially it's a small, it's a one person shop, the chamber. Um, uh, you know, my job is to be a good chamber and um. Serve my my serve my members. And certainly, community events um are a part of that. And I and I. I love being of an event planner. I actually love being a festival planner. Um, but it is difficult. Um, to do, you know, three day festival with then on top of, you know, serving my members. So. One of one of the things we are looking at doing is is creating, and and again, too, I think this is where it started out as a as a. As a financial and as a fundraising opportunity here to really kind of run the the fundraising app. To the public, really get that public buy-in, but to create a five oh one C three around Puffer Billy. So to create friends of Puffer Billy where you have a board, you have it's.
Excuse me to fundraise.
It is a opportunity for um for for Terry to donate to Puffer as a as an individual and then receive that that tax break. Um, and to support his his community funder, uh, community festival. Um, but also Terry can see the finances. Black and white, I mean, that the.
For donation.
Yeah, she is.
She's talking about your.
I am. And I I think that that's going to be an important aspect too, from even from a managerial standpoint, you've got a board of directors around it. You've got people, you know, the bylaws that say, you know, they, you know. They have things that they have to do, um, you know, on that board. And I think that it's going to be a great opportunity to really again, put it in the hands of the community. Because you're right, Terry, so that the chambers can make decisions. I, if people have thoughts on what the changes I'm making. And in the day, this allows the the community to really have buy-in and to really support.
Well, the good thing about this is you have to deal with the aftermath of all the changes.
Well, right. And that's a lot of, it's a lot of responsibility. It's a lot of liability for for one organization, let alone one person. And so with having the um a, you know, a a nonprofit and really being able to, as a community, come together and make these major decisions. Um, you know, and have those members even of that board, you know, you know, there's the bylaws that say, you know, you can only serve on the board for for three years or four years, you know, whatever the. The, you know, but at the end of the day, it it allows that and it's like to come in and really do well with Puffer as a as a town of Boone.
Well, I agree with you, I is uh, you can tell us where that money is coming from. That would be a good thing.
Absolutely will.
Good. And uh, like I said, with the the hotel motel thing, that'll be easier to have this conversation. We can see everything and writing in the application and stuff the future is. And then that money's specifically there too. It takes a little bit more pre-planning, but I think it would be here.
Yeah, and that's fine. I mean, that's, again, when I did the festival, that's what I, that's how I, you know.
Yeah, you did that for.
Um, so anyway, no, that makes sense.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up fiscal year two thousand twenty two audit, Kevin Houston.
Evening.
Evening.
I'll let this conversation lead right into my conversation, dealing with finances and and the audit, which we just recently finished up. Uh, Andrea felt like it drug on a long time and it seemed to. There's a reason for that. Uh, every year when we audit, we follow generally accepted government auditing standards nationwide. That's what that. In the state of Iowa, there's a lot of compliance audit. That's been expanded upon. And so we have somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty extra compliance things that we have to look at. Some of those are quite extensive. And there were some new ones this year, so it took a little bit longer for this to complete the audit. And also compliance issues, everything came up. There was no, we didn't run across any compliance issue whatsoever. And that's the main thing the state is interested in. Uh, they want to make sure that cities, counties, um, school districts are are in compliance with federal laws, state laws. Everything else. So um, as an example, you know, they want to make sure all the reports are filed on time, that we hit the reports and things like that. So we look at those reports and we look at when they're submitted and when they're accepted and that's just part of it. And it it takes some time to do that. Um, we also look at the financials extensively. We look at internal controls. Um, one of the things that is very positive in our view, the city is changing software. We think that's gonna, it's gonna be a lot of work. There's nothing easy to that anytime you change something like that. Um, but we're really excited to see that because we think that's also going to assist with some of these compliance things too. So it's a real positive in our view, but doing that, we've talked to uh Andrea, pointed me the direction of some of the other cities that use this. And and they're thrilled with this particular software. So we think that's really positive. It's gonna, you've already started it, is that right?
Building has already um gone live.
Yeah, yeah. And so, um, I mean, yeah, the utility billings, the accounting, payroll, everything's going to be wrapped into this. And we think that will fix some some small issues the city has along the way. And and so we're real real excited about that. So otherwise, the the audit itself, everything went well. It just took us a little bit longer this year because it's additional work with the state. I don't really have a lot. Anybody have any questions for me?
But. Yeah, actually, I do. Uh, on the audit, they found, uh, Kevin mentioned utility billing, uh, three things. Uh, some customers weren't charged sales tax on sewer revenue. One, that's been fixed. I asked staff to do a total audit of all commercial accounts on sewer. Accounts. Uh, there were forty four that weren't. Those have been fixed. Some of the reasons we're finding on that is the software what Kevin mentioned. Uh, I had Leslie get in there and actually do an account to see what happens when that was in. And there were some of the things that. I think were set up initially, but weren't working now where they weren't automatically checking those things like the tax. So it wasn't being done. All three eighty eight has been audited. So we're good there. Same thing on the stormwater. If you remember back in uh April of twenty two. Uh, I asked uh staff to do an audit on stormwater because I was uncomfortable with the revenue that was coming in, whether it was matching. Uh, of all of those, there were ninety nine accounts that were um found. Those have all been fixed. I think what, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, what they found was some dates they put in before we actually did that audit. So rest assured that the stormwater has already been fixed. The other one was a small uh thing that was misclassified in two thousand seven. That's been fixed. And we've taken those precautions to make sure it doesn't happen again. And I'll end on uh. The supervisor for the utility billing will do an audit of each change now of uh every time it it changes or we have a new one. She will personally do an audit on it to make sure it's set up right. So everything has been fixed. I just wanted to share that with council. Good.
Yeah, and that's that's good. And and the way we come about that is we seem like every year we select a certain number of customers. And included that customer is the city employees, not all. We we randomly select city employees, council members. And and we test those. Uh, and then we found, we found some instances like Bill mentioned. And so then we expand our testing. And so we test more and continue to find some more nothing dramatic or anything like that. We're just the numbers uh involved this year. That's why we put the comment in there. And it's it's been fixed and taken care of. And and again, I think the software is going to help tremendously with that.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Okay, any questions for Kevin? Thank you very much. Okay, next up, city of Boone housing study, Brenda.
Good evening. I alluded uh to uh the fact that we wanted to come back and discuss uh. Housing study and the need for a housing study and how we could potentially move forward with that initiative. I would note I'm joined tonight by the current board chair of the Boone Growth Organization, Ashley Reddicker, and past chair Nate Nierem. Um, I'll talk to you here in a bit about kind of where that group is standing in terms of willing to support. Uh, the city of Boone and their their efforts to do a housing study. I sent a really a scope of work to Bill to share with you all, so we wouldn't have to get too into to the details this evening. But what I am recommending to you is that we uh contract with the Mid-Iowa Planning Alliance. Uh, Boone was one of the early members of that group and uh it's a regional group of, and they have staff of planners, including a housing planner. And they would uh look at the census data. They would look at the census projections. They had looked at all of the past housing data uh on the community. They will conduct a survey. Uh, where citizens will be encouraged to provide feedback and kind of that provides the narrative and the things that kind of come through. In terms of what what people are saying about housing in the community of Boone. And uh, this process will take, um, you know, three or four months. And that's a pretty quick process. Uh, but I think it's real important instead of us trying to guess. Uh, what we should be trying to do in terms of housing in your community. Uh, getting a study that will actually look into the short term needs of the community and longer term needs. Uh, they'll they'll consult our offices regarding uh what's going on on the economic development front. What's planned for expansions? Who are we talking to uh for prospects? What's initiatives in the community? And really put together uh an executive report that works out really great to distribute to the public. And then there'll be a more detailed report that'll be made available to the council, to the Economic Development Board. Um, just so we can put good plans together. That'll actually be also the tool we use to to take to developers. So uh as folks are coming into the community and saying, what sort of housing do you need? Or we've got a great tract of land and. And how do we best assist them in making the decision to invest here? Uh, so one of the things I like about the survey is it'll actually say for houses between three and four hundred thousand. How many do they think will need on a short term basis? How many a long term basis? Um, how do we handle some of our most challenging housing needs? Those things where folks need to be at thirty percent of their income. And how do we best put together a strategy to support that kind of lower end housing? Um, it's called the Comprehensive Housing Study for a reason. And so um, the Boone Growth Court has acted and approved a four thousand dollar. Uh, support for the community of Boone uh to do the survey. I'm asking the city, the council tonight to act on eight thousand. And we have a request in for Alliance Energy for four thousand. And so between those three contributions, we would have enough to kick off the study. And get moving on that. Um, and again, my hope would be is by the end of summer, that we'd be able to bring the results back to you. Uh, share them with the board. We may even do a joint, a joint meeting with the planner uh to try to understand that. And I think I alluded to two weeks ago, um, Ogden has just went through this process and. Um, it was actually not a developer over there that nudged us to go that direction. And. Again, instead of guessing, it's it's great. We know they have a need of a hundred and twenty two housing units. We've got a number now. We can focus on. And I think the same will true here with the council and good information to help you track what's going on. But Bill, once a month, what's happening on housing? How many housing permits? So.
Has the city done something like this previously?
Bill, can you answer that? I could not find it.
Definitely not since I've been sitting in the seat and and thinking back, mayor, I I don't think it's been done.
So it it sounds like it's really would be helpful information for us and and a development and.
If we ever, if we plan on moving forward, we have to have something like this.
Yeah, that's.
Agreed.
What the need is and.
He liked.
Target there.
Yeah, if the four thousand from Alliance doesn't go through, what's the?
Um, well, I'll negotiate with the planner. Our offices will come in. And what I have volunteered to do is if there's even some things I need to do to help with what. It's on the ground. Um, I'm glad to do that if we if we come up a little short on the alliance side. Hopefully, since it'll be the last money in, they'll feel an obligation that.
Right, top it up.
Yeah. And and again, I think they've not necessarily been supported the community before with the housing study. I think they know too, they're got invested interest in every new home that goes up in the community. They flip a meter on it. I like Ashley and Nate, anything which of you'd like to, I mean, it passed unanimously through the Boone Growth Board. I think they know, I mean, I know they know how important it is in order to balance out and and really aggressively. Uh, pursue development. We need to know what we do need.
And what's the timeline? When will the data be?
Um, it'll be by the end of summer, Linda, that we can have something available in terms of a final report. So.
That's really, that's a really quick turnaround.
It it is a quick turnaround. And uh, this is a really a newer service. They kind of cut their teeth on the project over in Ogden. And uh, I just, as things have come on about, this is a really important thing in terms of us. Again, I mean, whether it be a tax credit project, whether it be a a market based rental project, or whether it be. Uh, where where does the next um higher end subdivision go? How do we tackle all of the different pieces of? I think it's going to come back and it's going to say, we need a little bit of everything. But it'd be good to be able to see that in black and white. And in terms of of how it breaks down in terms of what are really the community's needs are.
You need him, can you find that money, Bill?
That's my next question.
Yeah, I have found it. Uh, that's the reason I couldn't answer the other question because of this eight thousand for the housing assessment. And I will just note that uh, Eppa, who's doing this, is the the same planner did the review of our zoning ordinance that I haven't had time to bring forward to you yet. But there is no charge for that, just FYI.
And they also road share wastewater uh grant that was successful.
Right.
There are, I I mean, we have needed this in our region for a very long time. And so it's great to have that service now that.
But.
To be able to offer this. Anything from Ashley or Nate? Nate, did you do all the talking?
I was just going to say, it's it's nice to have a plan or a map. And this gives us that. And that's why I think our board is so poor. I guess no one speaks for Ashley, but they would need to pass it in and sleep for hours. And. I I know that we're a county, county group will be support all of our citizens, obviously, and I really, and this is something that we probably for a long time.
Great.
And we also did, our economic growth did contribute to Ogden's uh housing study as well. So. So they think too, because that initiated that support too.
Thank you.
I need to talk about this one. So.
Sounds good.
Yes, I moved that we uh. Allocate the eight thousand dollars needed for the housing study.
Nice, I got it.
Yep. Call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Holsabat?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Instrum?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Let me get this rolling.
All right.
Thank you.
Hey, Brenda?
Yes.
What's the status of the home improvement?
I was, I was actually going to pop back in, but um, so we have, I think, six applications so far and quite a few phone calls. So. I was, I was actually going to pop back in, but um, so we have, I think, six applications so far and quite a few phone calls. So. I don't know if it's good or bad, but I think there'll have to be some selection by your committee. We'll have a scoring matrix and so it's good that it's popular because I think then we can go back in and. And be able to initiate that. But you'll, those are due May first. And so we'll convene that your group to score those. Some point in time after it. So keep promoting it. I mean, we want good applications to pick from. And I haven't looked specifically at how much they're requesting, but.
Perfect.
The word's getting out.
Thank you.
Thank you. KF Public hearing for the consideration of adopting the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four budget. There any written comments?
Yeah.
Any public comments? Not this public hearing is closed. Um. So it's so three zero nine seven resolution adopting the twenty two thousand twenty four budget.
So approve.
Second, call the roll.
Back?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Okay, report of standing committees. We have nothing under policy administration. Public Safety and Transportation, David.
Yes, Your Honor. So we had our meeting and there was a discussion about a stop sign. I think Chief, would you like to?
Yes. So as we were talking about the new school going out on Hancock Drive. We also, I also started thinking about some safety around the other schools that we have remaining. And one of the. Um, we have a portable stop sign that rolls out at maybe, or excuse me, First and Delaware, right as the entrance of the middle school. And what I'd like to do is, my suggestion was to make that a permanent four way stop. And the reason for that is just consistency. I noticed that sometimes in the evening hours, if there's a event going on, a. Choir thing or a sports event or whatever, when people are leaving there, they're expecting that four way stop to be there. And it's not anymore because it's pulled out when school's out. And we've got some near misses there. We also get some. Complaints of speeding on First Street. And I think having that stuff, permanent four way stop there would certainly slow that traffic down and and cause them to. Stop there and just kind of help control the traffic through there. So that was my suggestion.
We talked about it, public safety and and in favor of this, we wanted to bring it. The council so everybody knew what was going on.
Like a good idea to me.
Sounds good.
Motion, motion to approve?
Yes.
Thank you.
For a second.
I'll second that.
Call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Holsback?
Yep. Yes. That's all I have.
All right. Hey, next up, Utility Committee, Terry.
There are two resolutions listed on there and I'll let the administrator scare, give you the detail.
Thank you. So in Wayland in looking at what we are charging for the meters, we found that we're behind the times and actually, I think, losing some money on them. He brought a new schedule to utility. Utility requested that the cost plus twenty percent. That's what I believe is on here. Is that correct, Wayland? So this is, as you know, our fees are brought by resolution. So we would need approval of this resolution to start charging these fees. So we're no longer losing money. Particularly, we have the twenty second and limb project coming, which is going to use a lot of meters, I'm assuming. So. It's important that we get this, plus the senior project. Do you have anything to add, Wayland?
I just. All of the meters at twenty second and. I didn't want them losing towards that. And twenty twenty percent, just so everybody's clear on this, twenty percent above our cost. Covered all the incidental pieces of brass that go with the meter. We're not trying to make any money on this. This is up that our ordinance says we supply with a meter. We give the fittings as a part of it. That twenty percent covers those.
Thanks for finding that.
So moved.
Okay, call the roll.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Holsback?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Eric?
Can we take the second one?
Yeah, you can take the second one too.
Okay, so as you know, we've been doing the I and I program here in City Boone. This year, we're doing phase four, which is downtown. So it's time to move on to the next one. This agreement with WHKS was brought to utility for review and approval. Up on the map there shows you the next area where we'll be doing the I and I program. They actually will be starting doing some of the tasks this spring with flow meters.
Flow meters are in to pick up the current spring rain.
Okay. And. Okay, so the the agreement is in there. It's budgeted for, and we would need approval of the agreement. With WHKS for them to perform phase five of the I and I program in fiscal year twenty four.
If you remember, uh, meeting that we had and there was some discussion by some of the citizens about water backup and stuff. This area should alleviate that, right? Because we kind of targeted that.
It's it's gonna, yes.
It'll help.
Some of it, some of it, some of the area was split on the way the water system or sewer system flows. Hopefully, next year, we can encompass everything or all. All of it.
So that should.
Primary, the primary area.
Alleviates some of that for us.
And the the agreement is the amount of ninety six thousand, seven hundred and forty one dollars.
I would move to approve.
Second. Call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Holsback?
Yes.
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Next up, economic development, Terry.
Just a couple of things. We met with dating group, Big DDC, Bill and I. At with the catering group, they're the developers that are looking at Park and Marion. All that out there, you discussed some timelines, some broad guidelines. If council chooses to approve. They are looking at about a hundred to a hundred and twenty minutes, different shapes and sizes. That'll be determined once we get past that point. It's night will. Start, will break ground probably in November or December. We have that land rented out right now for agricultural purposes. In November, December, they said a twelve to eighteen month timeline. His apartment's coming on probably after the eighth and ninth month, it'll start to come on. So that's pretty exciting, hundred and twenty years still. Um, nothing new to share about the UV project, other than they're very close to being done. I got a status report today. Ask for one. Well, the bad part about it was they didn't think they were going to make their timeline in April. Did you see that? Yeah. Uh, Mark sent me, said they're not going to make the timeline that they said.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I did see that late this afternoon.
Right. So. We'll see what happens. They never spent one day on that site in December. So just so you know. We went, uh, Councilman Bird and I went to ag certain day and. It'll presentation out there with Representative Feenstra. There's some exciting stuff going on out there. If we can make that happen among the city and and the state and Iowa State as a collaboration. Um, it could be huge for Boone and the city. So. I'll keep you updated as much as we can. And I went by Pritchard Brothers today and they have started their BDF renovation project. And that. So that's all I have here on.
Thank you. Okay, next up, department reports, Building Official Dave Aides. Uh, Finance Officer Andrea.
Just have a quick note. Most of you have probably received your tax assessment notices in the mail. I just want to point out that that is for the tax lobby that we will be working on next budget season. This budget season, we only saw a point four eight percent increase in our taxable values. So I just didn't want that to get confusing, that those dollar amounts that you're seeing everybody talk about are not what we made our tax lobby on this year. For next year. Dollars. I have.
All right, thank you. City Attorney Jim?
No reporter, Your Honor.
Uh, Public Works Wayland?
Yeah, real quick. Before you guys on the desk, as we're approaching the end of our snow season, hopefully, we're there. It was, give you guys some statistics on what we were. I wore you with reading all of them. If anybody has any questions at these. Please feel free to ask. I would like to also add that's not on your sheet. City Public Works crews did log eight hundred and eighty eight regular hours just for the first snow removal. That doesn't count going back. Cleaning corners or anything. It's also eight hundred and eighty eight hours straight. So this year feels like a normal year to you guys, but statistics show here it's not. We had fifteen events. The six hundred and sixty tons of salt, I think last year I probably was somewhere around two hundred, two hundred and twenty tons. So. We're three times up from that. That's all kind of really adding up in some of the figures. So just wanted to let you know what our crews were up to.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Forty one inches, Waylon, are you sure?
Okay.
I think it's bad weather, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Having in Minnesota.
So if you remember, at the last meeting, you approved the bids on the West Park and South Marion. Concrete construction project. So now it's time to to approve the contract. In the packet is a contract from DOT. If you remember, the bid price for that project was one million, two hundred and eighty five thousand, two hundred and thirty nine dollars. Uh, the resolution is in the in packet here. As well as a letter from SEH, who is our engineering consultant on the project. Uh, recommending that we approve the contract with Wick Construction to complete that project. I'll answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I need a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yeah.
Holsback?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Okay, next up, Public Safety, Chief Adams.
Uh, we're just awaiting, uh, this fire station bids are due Thursday, this Thursday, and we'll know more after that. As I have nothing.
Thank you. Chief Weble?
No reporter, Your Honor.
Uh, City Administrator Bill.
Thank you, sir. As the elected officials are aware, BJ McGinn resigned his council seat for second ward. That was effective, or excuse me, March thirty first of this year. So now here we're tonight to discuss how the elected officials want to proceed. Um, there's two options. One is appoint a citizen from Ward Two to the open seat. The term expires at the end of this year. So whoever you appoint will still need, if they want to retain the seat, will still need to run for election in the fall. I suggest what you can do if you decide this option is to accept letter, a letter of interest and a resume from applicants. Uh, until April twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty two at noon. At that time, that afternoon, the the applicant information will be made available to the elected officials. With the idea of bringing it forward on the May first council meeting. Uh, to discuss the resumes received and the letters received and make an appointment. The notice, so we're required to put a notice in the paper. That will be in the paper on April thirteenth. That will get us within the timelines of the four and twenty days according to Iowa law. Uh, the appointment must be made within sixty days of vacancy on an appointment. And as you know, even if you choose this, citizens can still. Present a petition for a special election. Now, just a reminder, this is just for Ward Two. It's not the whole city like the the last one was. The other election is you could vote tonight to hold a special election. Uh, I will tell you that the last special election that we just completed cost the city thirty seven hundred dollars. The last ward, uh, special election we had, which was a few years ago, was around, I think, thirteen hundred dollars total from the bill from the auditor. Um, if council decides tonight to hold a special election, then staff will begin working on the details as we did on the last special election. Uh, the special election must be held no later than ninety days from when the vacancy occurred. The vacancy occurred on April first of this year. Due to the closeness to November, when the other election is, the cost of the elections and what we just paid for the other special election. My recommendation to council would be to appoint somebody because it's not going to be that much time before the election. But of course, even if you did that, as you know, a special election could happen if 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 there's a petition. That is all I have. I'll leave it to the elected officials to have their discussion.
How fast would we seat? Someone on a an appointment versus? Special election?
Well, we have ninety, not more than ninety days on a special election. So that would take us probably the end of June. For the special election, by the time the auditors got everything and the staff did what they needed to do. Um, so you're looking at that person on a special election being seated in July. As opposed to if elected officials decide to make an appointment, that position could be seated May fifteenth after your discussion on. On May first. Yeah.
So go through the appointment again. Applicants, we would make that. Public that there's an opening and they could fill out an application, submit it. And then we would review those.
An application, a letter of interest and a resume.
Okay.
Then the council will review them. And at some point, someone will make a motion. They may, they may select a specific person.
Right.
Another councilman may want a different person.
So we discuss.
Vote on it.
Yeah, and it's just citizens from Ward Two.
They're the only ones that can put their resume in.
Right. I'm.
Well, um. Hate to say it, but I think we still need to do a special election because. I know of at least two people that are interested in. I think that the people of Ward Two may need to make the decision. That's just how I I think.
I agree. I agree with that, but let him petition for it.
Yeah, I think you appoint. And then if they have so many days to turn in a petition.
Well, we wouldn't be in this situation. If, I mean, if Councilman McGinn would have resigned earlier on, we could have just done it all in one shot.
But if we have someone interested in Ward Two, they also can.
Determination, though. I don't think we could have got him on that special election.
No.
Let's see if anyone's interested. They can, they can turn in.
And if they're dissatisfied with the outcome, they can petition for a special election anyway.
It's a lot of work to be out and do it two times in one year. I like it's, you know, you know, the amount of time that we that you put into it and the amount of money you put into it as well. Um, I I would just recommend just appointing somebody just as as well.
If the council gets to vote on it, I mean, gets to decide.
Yeah, we would decide and then.
Absolutely what I don't want to do. I don't want to make that decision for the citizens' ward two.
I guess for how many months?
At the core of my being, I do not want to do that if they have the opportunity to do that themselves.
So if we appointed someone, they would sit on the seat for six months and since election, they'd sit on it only four months and have to rerun again.
If they want to keep keep the seat.
Start running four months.
Yeah, that's right.
So.
Tom, you have a comment?
I think that the council and the poll. Should bite the bullet and do your job, make your selection by the. Reference letter you receive, pick the councilman for to. Complete that term and in November, that same person runs again. And someone else can run against him if he wants to. The two people that you know that want to run can submit their letter of resume to the council. And you guys need to realize that's what you have to do. At this time for a two month term, pick the guy and put him on. For woman, whatever you have as a name. But to keep passing it off saying that you have to have a vote for a two month term. Was just utterly ridiculous.
Brenda?
Well, I'd like the council to remember that is this taxpayer money?
Sure, yeah.
So. We don't really have a say. We elect you to do a job and spend the money wisely. So. Uh, if I recall, it took almost two months, am I correct in that, to get. Mr. Angstrom on the ballot? Or to even get the vote going. So we're running into. If even if he got appointed in July, he's going to be, this gentleman or woman is going to be having to run again immediately. And I don't even know if that's fair to them because they haven't even been given the opportunity to. To really settle in, to even really know how to run again. I mean. I don't, I get the good feeling of wanting the community to make a decision, but you were elected to do a job, do you not? These, and I'd say that because you you take pride on saving taxpayer money, and that's not saving taxpayer money. That is costing us money so that, you know, this isn't a popularity contest. This is a duty that you ask to serve. And you'll get seen as quickly as you can and getting that BJ and Ben for. Bettering his life and it just happens that we can change is kind of unprofessional in my opinion, but.
I don't know why he resigned. Nobody told me so.
Well, you can ask, you can ask him.
You moved, damn.
You can sit up next to him, you can. You can sit up next to him, you can ask him.
I didn't call anybody out, I just said that if we would have done it before, we could have had one special election, we'd have been done with.
Well.
Right, he, I don't think he he was going to move.
I think the council needs to reconsider that their role up here is like money, and it's tight, things are tight right now all over. And that your job is to, you know, to appoint somebody in that seat for six months, it's not a problem, in my eyes.
I mean, the people are going to petition it anyway if they want it.
That's what I'm saying.
That's the reality of it, if they want it, we don't know that. Probably do.
Then they can work for it.
Yeah, let the taxpayers decide if they want to spend the money.
See what you got.
Right, if they want it, they can step up and run for it and work for it instead of.
Yes.
This is a question here, there's, um, I, I've heard you, Mrs. here, I like, um, you know, make sure you got in there, how much of a special life it costs. And I'm gonna, I know, I know the board too, so I'm gonna have to give them, um, talk to people. If they want to do it, I won't petition, but why isn't that getting highlighted and we can, without any hesitation, you'll have eight thousand dollars for a, a housing, housing, uh.
Study, study.
No, no question asked, everyone will ask this stuff. I watched this woman, but never give a heck of a presentation. And question, 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 question. I, I just curious, I feel, you made it a point to highlight how much of a special life he's going to come, but I'm just curious. How much of a special election it costs for wellness centers, you still got a vote on? Just curious, you guys know that?
Do I, I'm sorry, do I have a number for how much a wellness center is going to cost?
Special election that, that we call, for the record, why you can gain all those, I, I was one of the, that were.
Oh, you mean the first one?
Yeah, the second one, we, you know, have post.
Who says it's going to be a special election? Could be a, a general election.
Well, it, the wellness center, we got to have a vote on it, we had to petition, we got to have a.
It could be an item on our general election.
Could be, yeah. And I would always prefer that.
You know, uh, how much, you know, this special election will cost. We're giving this one eight thousand dollars, not hesitation, I think the woman, probably get the presentation, I'll change it, they can exit. It, it wasn't all that essential. So I mean, to me, to, to highlight that, almost like you're, you know, considering people of Ward Two, hey.
Sure.
No, this is going to come from, we just only found, know it without, without any hesitation, long.
Yeah.
What is your recommendation? What do you think?
I think. People of Ward Two, if they want to.
Yeah, that.
Appointed till.
And they will be able to, that will happen. So even if we appoint, say, if we said tonight, hey, let's appoint somebody, they could come in here tomorrow or whatever timeframe they have with signatures, we scrap our deal and then we have an election. I mean, it's that simple.
So, and you had a question about why I brought it forward, I'll absolutely answer that question. I brought it forward because it's public information and it's my job to present information to the council so that they can make the most informed decision. If you'll notice on the housing assessment, there was a public discussion on an agenda and a public discussion with the elected officials to decide if that was a good way to go. The amount of the special election, it was important that they knew that so that they're having a public discussion up here to decide one of two options of which way they were going to go, and it's my job to present that information to them. That's why it was there.
You know, the, all the questions you're geared towards that, and I just watch and observe and see without hesitating, because like, nothing, maybe there's not really any questions on it, but I mean, highlight that for a second. Uh, probably, we're giving, we're bringing up an invoice. I'm just highlighting that, this is what you're really doing, I'll highlight it, I'm on set, a special election. But I'll tell you one, if people were to do one of those, like, much like, but the wellness center. I'll make sure it's.
That's awesome. You're right as a citizen.
Absolutely, you know, make sure it's, you know, you have.
Okay, so council has a decision to make.
I'll make a motion to a special election.
Okay, that motion.
So the only thing with the special election, and I was the one who was for that last time, um, because I thought we had enough time and we still do, um. But the only thing with the special election this time that I'm kind of nervous about is really it's only four months, but they'll be to sit there, and so by the time they get to know everything, I mean, they'll have to rerun, and that kind of sucks, um, I feel like for them. So, I don't know, so that's why I feel like if we appoint someone, I mean, we do it at this normal city council meeting, right?
Yeah.
People can still come.
Yeah, absolutely, it's all transparent, everybody.
And I'm the same way, I, I, um, was not for it, but I think just the amount of time, it's, it's almost not worth going through all the effort to get a special election. Um, and I also feel that, yeah, if Ward Two is interested, they'll petition for it and we'll be right back to doing the election, so, um, but that's okay, they've kind of then said it's okay, I mean, they're agreeing to spend the money for that.
Right.
Um, and supporting us to use the money, but it really is a short amount of time.
And will the councilmen get, or councilwoman get appointed and then the special election would happen? Or what would that timeframe be? Like, would we be able to appoint somebody?
Well, if we decided to appoint, I would imagine, if, if Ward Two wants to do a petition, they still have the opportunity to bring that in before we set anybody.
Okay.
So. Yeah, they have, it's, I mean, it comes down to this, you can appoint, and if people in Second Ward want to come out with a petition, they will come in. We'll scrap the appointment and we'll have an election. That's just right.
Sure.
Tom.
So, so the dates, I've got this correctly, we'll petition, submit resume and it's whatever minutes would be, you do what at twenty-sixth of April?
Yeah, we will post it, uh, we're required by law to post it in the papers, that'll be on April thirteenth. Uh, I mean, they could, if they hear about it, they can do it beforehand, sure, but we, we're required by Iowa law to post it in the paper. So that'll be April thirteenth with the deadline, accepting those at noon on the twenty-sixth of April.
Well, then, our next council meeting after the twenty-sixth would be when you would review those and make a selection?
There, well, there could be, there'd be a public discussion, it'll be on the agenda, and it's up to the elected officials whether they make a decision that night.
But it could happen that night.
Yes, sir.
We could have a councilman to fill out vacancy that quick. Unless.
Well, if, if, if they've made a decision on May first, that councilperson could be seated May fifteenth.
Yeah.
That's when the, that's the council meeting, that, this would be discussed, loaded on, would be May fifteenth?
No, May first, they'll, it'll be discussed.
Okay.
And if, if the elected officials so choose to make a decision that night and appoint somebody, they would be seated and sworn in at the May fifteenth city council meeting.
But that whole idea could be scrapped if somebody files a petition to have a special election, so that could happen prior to us appointing anybody or even interviewing anybody.
So, no, we had a motion on the table, there's no second, so that motion dies, there are new motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint somebody.
I'll second that.
Thanks, call the roll.
Mormon.
Yeah.
Josephette.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Stein.
Bill.
Okay, my second item, uh, at the request of Councilman Steins, uh, we brought forward that bill for the, uh, trailer that we talked about at the last council meeting. Uh, that bill is for one thousand two fifty, one fifty, that trailer is used to haul around the city-owned fence down at the eighth and story. Uh, hand it to the elected official.
Did you have any question?
Can I get some background? Chris, you're here, you were involved with the purchasing, can you give us some background on how that was, uh, decided you needed it? Uh, what was the purchasing process, design process, stuff like that? I just glad you're here so you can describe this a little bit more.
Excellent, um, and thanks for asking, uh, so basically, you know, you guys all understand volunteers are hard to come by, they're hard to come by these days. Um, just not a civil duty that a lot of people, um, do much anymore, so, so the volunteers, um, so we close our streets last year at two o'clock, and it's like us literally up until about four-thirty to get all set up and be ready to go. We made the decision as a committee to buy our tables this year, so we didn't have to, we had to have three men volunteer the tables, people are, are extremely happy. And quite frankly, I feel like I'm a fairly strong woman, but I'm not. So it's a three men away from our setup to go do that, so we decided to purchase tables this year. Thank you to a lot of volunteer, a lot of people that sponsored those, we put the, um, I, I sent out the committee and they did an awesome job, and within, um, uh, four or five days, we had fifteen vol, or fifteen people that sponsored to to have their names on tables downtown. So, um, with that, in order to, again, cut down our lead time of having to set up, uh, we had decided that it would be a good idea to have some type of cart mover to put them fences on. If not, it took two volunteers, especially more so women, the men can carry one, but the women had to have two people on each end, every each gate. We have about forty gates. How many?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, okay, gates that needed set up. So again, that takes a lot of time for us to do that. So we put the plan in motion to, to have a gate mover, um, design, it'll put ten, um, ten gates on the cart mover, and then we'll wheel those around.
It was basically to accommodate the downtown businesses by changing the time. We shortened the setup time so we didn't have to close the streets.
Yeah.
Early, so we gave them, we bought them another hour, they mo, most of them closed between four and five anyway. So we bought them that extra hour. We have, you know, that committee has done everything that we can to work in tandem with downtown. We've modified our gates, we've done whatever they've asked us to do within reason so that we could still have that celebration, but, um, that's what it was for. Right.
Is there a place to keep this out of the weather and stuff?
Um, that's a good question.
Well, it's powder coated and, and weatherproof, uh, we can keep it outside with the gates, the gates sit outside too. Um, Stephen Yocum, who did, who did, did all the metalwork down there at the Green Space, is the one that designed and built this in his metal shop, and he used, understand that that twelve hundred dollars doesn't even cover the labor for building that thing. He used pipe and wheels and stuff that he had in his shop to build it. So it's basically the material cost for the steel. So, um, and it's, you know, one, one.
Open to anybody that wants to, you know, some reason, and then all.
And has used as a fence.
Through one of the gate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's city property.
Yeah, so it's open to anyone to.
Yeah, it's city property, it's one, one concern I do have is that we weren't approached about this before, it was all put into motion, I, we understand that, so that's why it gives me a little bit more time.
Sure.
That would be, that would be on me because we talked about this, and I told them to go ahead and build that, we were going to, we had to have that anyway. And we were, we were just going to cut a few corners and stuff, we're operating on a shoestring budget here. We barely break even, and I know you think the beer sales and stuff, but we have a lot of expenses that go along with this. Uh, the, the music and entertainment's gone up, everything's gone up, so uh, that was just, I should have come, I should have mentioned it beforehand, I told her, I said, I think I can take this to council, I think council will approve this. And so we went ahead and ordered it because it took Stephen a lot of time. He works in the ag business.
He couldn't even meet the meeting today.
Make the meeting today because he's, uh, he had to build it in the office.
So I just, I went ahead and did that, so if, that's not really Chris, that's me.
So you okayed it, and so if we don't okay it, then you're, you're paying, you mean?
Yeah.
I can do that if I need.
Wouldn't be the first time I donate.
I think you get stuck.
To be clear, this has not been made yet?
No, it's made.
Okay, it is made, okay, so, sorry, it's the way you phrase it, just, sorry.
I, no, it's made.
And if you don't approve it, it'll be something the C B B owns, I, I mean, if we ever lose the contract, I'm not sure what.
What I can do is I could have Stephen send me a picture of it, and I could forward that to everybody, if you want.
The city can use it for various reasons.
We're going to use it.
Makes sense.
I think it's a good idea, I get it, the transparency thing, but, um, I mean, if, yeah.
That's why I'm, it's going to help, so. That's why I'm glad that you're here to explain our process, um, everything like that, but in the future, we definitely need to know ahead of time about this stuff before, so we can make an informed decision ahead of time. That's by request. And the, the financing of this bill?
Where would that be? Economic development, who's, why not?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Okay, number six, consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that you'd like removed and discussed separately, and if not, I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Josephette.
Yes.
Number seven, ordinances, A, second reading ordinance twenty-two eighty-six to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the stop sign regulations on Hancock Drive and South Lynn Street, chapter sixty-five, section sixty-five point zero-two.
So, second.
Call the roll.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Josephette.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Okay, number eight, I have no comments this evening, number nine, council member comments?
I do, just a brief, um, question for council. Um, at the, I attended, I think I'd mentioned, one of the public forums for the candidates, and, um, it was really well-attended, a lot of people there and they asked a lot of questions, um, Kyle, you'll agree with me. They, well, they, they ask a lot of questions and, and, uh, I think what I found was, there's just a lot of lack of information on a lot of topics that we could be sharing, and so what I've done is I, uh, made a list, filed kind of a list of a lot of the questions that came up at that public forum, as well as what people have continued to ask. And I've, uh, typed those up, and I'm just wondering how the council, um, would like to proceed. I think it would be a good idea to kind of respond to those and put that out, and we can either do that and, and um, what I would like is that everybody, you know, I'll share, I mean, we'll pass it out and everybody will get a, a set of them, and we can look them over. Um, what I think is how would we disseminate that? Would we just create a handout that we would, uh, make public information they could pick up? Uh, would we kind of put those, uh, comments, and, and I know you haven't seen them, so it's probably hard for you to make a decision on on the type of things, but, um, also, we could, we could, uh, have a, a forum and, and open it up and, and go through those questions and respond, or we could put it on our website, so. Um, something to think about there, and, and I know it would probably help if you saw a list of the questions. Um, there are about twenty-five of them that, um, were asked, so you know, and just a lot of general, general kind of things that, um, the information would be good to get out, so think on that and, and.
But I will comment as well, I listened as well, and, and when you have candidates putting out false information, that doesn't help either.
Correct, and so.
You have no idea what you're talking about as far as taxing and, and those types of things. Listen, I want facts out there. And I think our auditor just proved that we do a great job, but there, there is stuff being said, it's, it was ridiculous.
And that's why I thought.
That helps, makes people go, oh, I wonder, so maybe it is a good idea, we'll put some info out.
And, and have everybody look at it, we can kind of discuss and make sure we've got, and Bill, I've already sent him a copy, and so I mean, make sure that we, we get the accurate information out, and just real brief responses, but I think it might be a really good way to share some of that information, because there is some misinformation or misunderstanding on what we're doing at, Williamson.
Maybe, maybe it's something we could address along the way in the newsletter, or something that comes out.
Right, so we could certainly.
Go and then give the concept work to triage or something.
I, I've, uh, actually answered three quarters of them. But the problem with trying to answer them, uh, I, you mentioned that on some of them, maybe, I think you're right, interpretation. Uh, how do I, without follow-up and things like that, so if you, if you, I will tell you that if the elected folks decide to have a public forum information, I'd be more than happy to come there and answer these questions.
We have a public forum information twice a month.
I know.
They can come here and ask any question they want. Under public comments, they would rather do that.
But listen, when you've got people saying things like, how would they build that housing development there, that's a, that's a direct hit from a tornado. Who, who makes these things up? I mean, you can't, no one knows that. Or they've got, Boone's got two firefighters, uh, no, we don't, we've got more than that. I mean, just things that are just.
You know, I'll just.
It's hard.
About two or three, uh, why doesn't the city fix up the railroad viaduct by Hy-Vee? It's bad shape, I mean, we've heard that.
The railroad owns ownership.
Well, I know, we know that, but will Fairway help fund a new community center if we reuse the old Y building? Uh, what's a Main Street program? How do we know what's going on with council? I don't do Zoom meetings or attend the meetings. Right there. So, I mean, you know, there's, those are the kind of things that came up and I went, okay, we could certainly respond to that.
That we can continue to do is push people to sign up for the e-notify. And really get, get pinged every time your inbox for anything that comes up.
That's still a certain audience that.
Well.
That goes online. I mean.
Well, been battling this for four years. We, we used every informational venue that was available to us in Boone. The newspaper, T W B G, websites, social media.
You have to be patient.
Still caught.
Reiterate, the perfect example, the snow ordinance. We've had it for years, okay? We don't want to tow anybody's car. I hate it when we tow. But we have a snow ordinance in effect because we have less employees. It's easier to plow the streets where there's no cars on it. Less damage, we're more efficient, the streets are cleaner, and we do it in a better amount of time. Okay, we tow somebody's car. They call me. Um, I had no idea you guys had a snow ordinance. Um, I don't go to meetings, I don't listen to the radio, I don't get a newspaper, I don't get your water, I don't get the water bill or whatever. I go, well, other than me knocking on your door and telling you, I don't know how else you would know, because we're doing the best we can trying to get that info out. And I, listen, I don't want to tow anybody's car. I hate that. And, but it's always our fault and we're trying to be more efficient for Public Works so they can get their job done, but yet it always turns around that we didn't tell anybody.
And I agree, we're never going to get it all covered, but to me, this is one more step in, in kind of footing it out and, and what, um, we can send it out to everybody and then you could take a look at them.
I think in a less direct way, Bill has the questions that you're talking about. You know, in, uh, that could be fodder for future newsletters, things to work in as we go along and stuff like that. But again, whether or not people read it, one specific example, something you brought up with the, you know, things having to do with the railroad and the viaduct and the ownership things that go along with that, somebody can say that and then they'll be corrected immediately. You know, by somebody else out in the community and they just won't listen to that. And there's nothing you can really do about that except for be patient.
Right.
Now, it's frustrating, but, um, then I just have.
Well, I can work with Eric from Concept Works, uh, to put it out on e-notified, these questions and our answers.
Yeah, I mean, in.
There you go.
The elected officials want to review these before I send them.
I, I think that'd be good.
So we're talking in facts, correct facts, I don't care. Put them out there. I want people to know the truth and I want them to know.
I will do my best to get them completed, like I said.
I mean, I'm fighting, we weren't going to bring this up, just like the railroad. I am fighting with them right now because we were given somewhat of a verbal commitment that if we donated to this overpass, they would slide their trains out east further. I think it's gotten worse. Now, there's some things to go along with that. They still need to close courts and whatever the case may be. But it's frustrating because, and I'm sure you folks get calls. I get calls all the time. And I get calls from railroaders that are on the train that want to stop the train where they should, but they said, and they make them pull it in. You know, so they're even, they understand it, but we don't. We're in for that project over six hundred thousand dollars of city ta, tax dollars. And not one inch of that is in the city of Boone. But we did it for the public safety side of it, to get police cars, ambulances, fire trucks to the north side, you know, type, because someone's going to die. I'm telling you, the train's going to hold somebody up and it's going to be a bad deal. Not to mention the time we wa, there, a kid pulled his bicycle underneath the train because he got tired of waiting. Those are all things that we talk about, but something's going to happen. And I'm going to fight them till the end, until they move them damn trains out further. And at least open up what they should. And it's, Bill gets mad at me.
Hit list for DC.
Bill gets mad at me because I call Bill and vent to him and I don't mean to, want the trains, but
Yeah.
It's not fair to the people on the other side. We can't get to them.
If you wanted to put a blurb in about what you're doing, I think that would be well.
Yeah. And I also want to take the signs. They say, call that eight hundred number. If, if you guys went up and looked at that.
Number ten.
If, if you're the first car, you can read it. If you're not the first car, you can't read it. So I want to turn the signs and even make our own signs about this big, waiting for a train, call one eight hundred, you know.
You should stand out there with the sign.
I would, actually. Free Pat, we, I said, we traveled all over the state chasing the DOT commission to get this thing moved up. Now it's moved up, project's done. They, they need to fulfill their commitments. So, yeah, thank you. Anything else? Any other, where are we at?
Public comments.
Public comments?
No, this is sort of been science saying, notification really does. And then it really does. People, you come and get the information themselves. It's here, it's here in this building and everybody has a representative and if they don't like people, don't feel they're hitting answers from the representative, there's two at large council people. So to accommodate, I mean, I agree, giving the appearance out there, but, but these people really do just like to do this and complain and not really take action. So you're wasting so much of your time. Pay to do all of that kind of work. Back there, you hire somebody, just answer some of the questions.
Alvin?
And I've similar to you, recent conversation here, just purchase a dozen Superman keys, problem solving.
Yeah.
I would like to revisit for a couple minutes, the, uh, possibility request. That I understand there's a bird or two hundred people saddled from, from past. You can't fix the past. The folks, we can look forward to the future. Uh, the difference between five thousand and ten thousand dollars is pretty obvious. That's, that's five thousand dollars. But I would like to, basket, consider really jumping into this, supporting it. I don't know how much money we put into the fireworks this fall, but by the way, which is a great thing in Boone, that brings key in Boone. It's five thousand dollars and ten thousand dollars, I don't know. But folks, that's something, that's, that's something open for the next. Offer though, I saw a weekend, that brings people in from various communities, probably from various parts of the state. For our council, which is. Go gun, open that. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Any other public comments? If not, this meeting is adjourned.